I'd like to call the Lennox Township Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, June 4, 2012, at 7:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the Fledgling Legions. Fledgling Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. optional agenda. Any deletions or additions? I have one addition under unfinished business if we could. The President Kukai here tonight, the Village of New Haven Community Festival. And if we could, if he could, he has another event I think yet tonight, if we could do that under public comment, that would be alright with everybody. Mr. Kukai, does that work for you?
Works for me.
Any other deletions or additions?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn please. I approve the agenda or adopt the agenda with the one change, one change Kukai.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keith. Another discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Public comment. Any public comments? Mr. Kukai done, if you win it this time?
Actually, I came just to speak about two other items. I didn't know, obviously we brought a fundraiser up like six months, five months ago, so I don't know what importance with that. But we have two events going on in the Village of New Haven. The actual grant goes for everyone. The first will be my folks.
Yes, please.
First event will be a fundraiser for our food pantry. It is this Thursday at 8:00 PM. I don't know if it's familiar with country singer Josh Grayson. He's performing at the Hoedown Downtown on Friday, but he's gonna do a VIP reception, invitation only, to help support the New Haven Lennox Food Pantry. And it'll be hosted by country radio station 99.5. And every member of the Lennox Township Board has an invitation to that. The entry is only a candidate for the food pantry. So if you enjoy country music, I hope to see you there. And the next event is a bus tour between the Village of New Haven and New Haven Community Schools, the small brochure you have right there, on Saturday, June 9th, from 12 to 5:00. Throughout that brochure, there's different deals that businesses throughout the community are offering during that time. Free, I know one of those, like hot dogs, I know the historical societies who participate in that, most of the businesses along the grass are participating. Also, I hope everyone comes out and is a part of that. So we got a couple of things going on in the village in the next week or so that you guys are welcome to attend. Any questions about any of those events?
Can you update on the festival?
The festival will be July 21st at New Haven High School, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. We've currently got some donations, we're actually in pretty good shape. We cut it down from a three-day event to a one-day event because of funding, but we will have a community celebration on July 21st, which everyone's welcome to attend. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I still would like to see us as a township get involved, put the village on this festival. I think it's a great event for our community, bringing them together. If there's any other way we can help personnel or anything too, President Kukai, please let us know.
I think, as I stated at the first meeting, we always in need of volunteers, so we're more than welcome to help out. From our February meeting, I think the receptionist, Robyn, she actually made a contribution towards the event. I know Mrs. Turgey got the marines to help us out with volunteers. We can always use manpower. I know, I think Rich Lynn is gonna do a shuttle for us again this year, so we can always use volunteers.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
I make a motion that we open the public hearing at 7:39.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Turgey. Public hearing opened at 7:39. All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Everybody has a copy of the budget report that was distributed due to timing, requiring information. Also too, I talked to Paul Billy today, he has some input that I'd like to go over with This is something we can attach to our annual meeting, take care of under the budget line adjustments too. I don't know if anybody has any questions at this time regarding it.
Go through the capital items so that the residents know what's on the list.
At this time, I'm showing you a capital outlay of, I believe, $180,000. We spent 41 to date. I believe our projects that we're working at is the restroom facility for the park. We had some diamond dust I know we wanted to take care of, also for our ball field. And I believe we used the new vehicle as part of that also too, as part of our capital We don't own a major outlay, so I don't know this time. I would like to ask too, do we have any sense of how much more tax tribunal refunds we're looking at?
Well, at this point right now, anything that's being done would be better than next. This is where you're at.
I almost forgot something between now and the end of this moment, in this 30-day period.
And that's a possibility on the basis.
Next question, this doesn't necessarily relate to the capital outlays, but I notice we got a big page dedicated to the assessing department. In terms of budget, $180,000. Could that be deleted and in its place budgeted for the contract amount?
Well, I think that's, we still don't know the amount. We're going off the old budget amount because of, we do not know the amount of rechecks they have to do. They're gonna fill us in and charge us accordingly, from what Bill Griffin said. And that number was still above their total costs, so I think, they just started today, we'll have a better idea after they look at everything. I kinda think they're gonna recheck everything after talking to them, so to keep that number in place until the rechecks are done. After the rechecks are done, their budget cost is $71,000.
That's one of the things between now and the annual meeting we'll go through, and instead of having that whole assessing, it'll be pushed into more like one, well, two-line items, the recheck versus the assessing cost.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll give us a summary billing on what they expect.
Couple of the other large capital outlay would be the vehicle replacement for the fire department, they're getting ready to go into that. And then the LX1 for the water sewer department.
For the fire, that would be funded out of the fire fund though?
Yes.
I'm sure this is just time for the public hearing, so if there's no other publicly public comments, we'd close that unless you want to leave it running permanently, but yeah, I make a motion to close the public hearing now in 2012-2013 budget.
Motion by Trustee Turgey, supported by Clerk Keith. Close the public hearing at 7:45. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. approval of minutes 5:212 and 5:712.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of 5:212 and 5:712 as printed unless someone else has an objection.
Motion by Trustee Turgey, supported by Trustee Paisley. Any questions? Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Mid-month business. I have none at this time. Sheriff's report, is your sheriff here? We've been running a little late too on the sheriff reports coming. Were they coming a week or two late tonight? Fire Department report.
Please review file.
Thank you, Chief.
Open further.
EMS report.
I put some information in front of the board tonight, just to review your major.
Thank you, Ms. White. Code enforcement report.
I do have the literary inspection forms to give.
Thank you.
Good evening. Normally I receive and file given what's on here, but due to the last week of events that we've had, just kinda wanted to bring everybody up to speed. Approximately 11:45 AM last Tuesday, DWSD Detroit Modern Sewer Department experienced a massive break under 36-inch line toward Shelby Township. Unfortunately, that's the line that ends up and terminates in our area that supplies our water for our system. Approximately at that time, I received a phone call from a neighboring community advising me of the rapid loss of pressure. Once I was able to get to my office and look at our SCADA system, which we're able to see what our pressures and flow are, you could see that the rapid drop. Contacted DWSD, they were unsure of what the problem was at that time, but shortly thereafter, it was determined, this massive break over on 24 mile road. Once that was determined, I knew that we would not regain water pressure anytime soon. A boil advisory was put into effect for our area at that time. The media as well as residents and commercial users were notified. They were able to reestablish some water pressure approximately three, three and a half hours later. It still wasn't enough to maintain system pressures throughout. It still kept us at a critical stage. Every day, I put calls in for updates and basically asking for more pressure, but because of this alternate feed that they put us on, it, most of the pressure and flows were being robbed by the southern communities. So there just really wasn't much left for us at the end of that line again. But as luck would have it, the way the weather constantly changes here, not only did it get cooler, but we had some rains come in, the tail end of last week and over the weekend, which demand dropped off greatly, which helped us out and gave us a lot more pressures. Also on Thursday, I believe it was the day I forwarded the timeline that was given to me from DWSD, at that time, it looked like that line was not gonna be put back in service until tomorrow on Tuesday. The thing that I hated was is, given knowing that, I didn't think we were gonna be able to start flushing our system to test it until tomorrow. But since pressures went up on Thursday, they stayed stable until Friday morning. I was able to get approval from the DQ to start flushing, which I was able to complete and start testing on Friday. I concluded sampling on Saturday, received my final results Sunday morning, and was able to lift the boil advisory Sunday, which was really huge, especially for some of our commercial users to knock that many days off, because it really, really disrupted their normal operations and made things very difficult on them as well as the residents. So that was a really monumental task that we were able to accomplish and speed things up to get that back online. We still are experiencing lower than normal pressures. Matter of fact, we kinda felt a little bit this morning at PM Monday. It was extremely high demand this morning, so pressures were down a little bit, but they recovered shortly thereafter. And as I mentioned earlier, hopefully tomorrow, they'll be putting that line back in service and downtown Wood, our pressures will go back to what they normally are. Okay? Anybody have any questions on the water main and the boil advisories that were put into I know it was, there was a little bit of miscommunication with some of the media reports because it was three, four different communities that they put advisories in, and it kinda gets a little confusing to them, who's lifting and who's not. I didn't feel comfortable lifting mine as early as some of the other communities because we're at the tail end and we weren't able to flush as early until we completed our testing. If anyone is curious why we were lifting this. Further on down my report, as Joni mentioned earlier, we're looking at replacing our pressure reducing valves in the LX1. Due to the project that the county handed us to look forward into our sewer capacity, we've kinda had to backburner that project a little bit, but with that coming to completion, hopefully we'll be able to get going, and I should have time then coming to you on that shortly. Everything else is normal, month-to-month activities that we take care of. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisors report. After this weekend, after seeing some of the news reports, I contacted our planner, Patrick Mauer, and asked him, there's a big scare going on throughout the state regarding, it's called K2, that our kids are getting into. It's a synthetic marijuana that a lot of the gas stations and smoke shops are selling. I asked him if there was any type of ordinance that we could put in place quickly. He assured me that we could do like a prohibition-type ordinance against this to protect our youth and adults of our community. This basically doesn't discriminate age-wise, but I think it's something that we should move very rapid on. Must say, a county executive was on the news also, trying to put something into effect. But I think for our community, I'm speaking with Patrick, he said he could have something together by Wednesday. We would have to publish, but I think it's something we should move on very quickly. And if anybody in the community runs into any of these places that are selling this, it's garbage, it's death, anything that they can let us know, that we can go talk to them and maybe they'll stop willingly till we get the ordinance in place, would definitely help. So please give us a call, let us know if we see it around our community. But it's causing a lot of problems. I talked to some of the sheriffs and it's very addictive to these kids. So anything we can do to expedite this, words help greatly appreciated. Also, we had a couple issues of complaints out at the soccer fields on 26 mile road for late-night partying. I called the gentleman in, they now have club rules posted behind their club bar that they cannot open any earlier than 11:30 and close at 12:00. Any music they're putting upon themselves to stop by 11:30. We cannot find the decibel gun, but actually we don't need it because if it's determined too loud by our sheriff department, they will issue tickets. I informed the gentleman that they want to help, they wanna be good neighbors in the community. They informed me that they would be willing to put the responsible party of their club up on the wall next to this posting with their telephone number, so when the, if the police are called, if the sheriff's called, they can go right there, find the name, the phone number, and if a ticket has to be issued onsite, it'll be issued to that individual. So it makes that party a little more responsible in keeping the party under control onsite. So hopefully we'll have no more issues out there at this time. I have nothing more.
Make sure your ordinance includes take 12 and spice.
You know, could you say that on the microphone for the record, please? Just so you know.
I can hardly walk.
Somebody under the mic right there. And you know, I also heard maybe salt, pass salts or something.
Yeah, yeah. So make sure that your ordinance covers all four of the items because there's always ways of getting around things. Thank you. There's always ways of getting around things if you, with limit to one, because they are four different means.
Yeah, and I don't know, sure whether you ran in any of this out about, but...
No, I might, I mean, my only suggestion might be survive, because I know, as you mentioned, the county executive, it's been on the news every day, it's spoken a bit about this, and I believe the health department and the county may have information on that as far as what language it is, because I know the way they got around selling it in the state is a changing ingredient in it which changes the, you know, changes the chemical and then becomes legal again. That's basically how they're, you know, like the word is around it. My suggestion would be maybe administer markers to the planner, contact county health department for some direction.
Shilling.
Yeah, I heard you riff on the radio, there's a recording on us, I haven't seen the ordinance.
I heard they were going to Nacogdoona also, were great. Yeah, whatever we can do to help this, speed this along and get it so that it's solid, definitely helps. Thank you.
I make a motion that we accept the questions, do you pardon?
Motion by Trustee Turgey, supported by Trustee Paisley. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries.
I don't have any questions, I only have a comment on item number 27. We paid over $2,000 for a legal fee from an outside attorney only because we didn't believe our attorney and the judgment was still the same, so I'm very disappointed that we have paid that much extra.
There was one bill added. Richard, sorry. It was stuck behind another one, so there's a new total, $234,534.36.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what opinion you're talking about, but we actually only had a close session with that attorney yet, and your interpretations are probably a lot different than mine, and the reason our attorney was abused because he was involved in the matter. So it had to be an outside party that was suggested by our insurance company, because it could be something that we would definitely need insurance protection to protect us from in the litigation, that could cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think $2,000 for neutral parties, money well spent versus hundreds of thousands.
I disagree. So. What would be the amount here?
The amount of the bills?
Yeah.
$2,175.
I make a motion that we approve the orders and bills at $234,534.36.
Thank you. Court. Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Churchy. Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Paisley?
Aye.
Hoppaker?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Trustees' report. Whoever goes first.
No, I have to start.
The only thing I have to report at this time is that you can watch our meetings on YouTube. They've been downloaded to YouTube, so if you don't get channel six, you can watch it there. And as usual, all my other reports will be filed at the front desk.
I got a few things. First, Karen and I attended last Sunday the dedication of the War Memorial in Richmond. And they want to congratulate Richmond, the city of Richmond, on doing a fine job. I mean, they worked for years on this, and it's a beautiful memorial. They had a sculpture put on it, and they did a wonderful presentation. So congratulations to them. And also, there was actually, they had bulletin boards in Maniaches that talked about all the soldiers that were mentioned on there, and there was one that was from Lenox Township. There was also Leo Sullivan's on there and a Manchett. So it's not just residents of Richmond, it was the whole area, so it was very impressive. So if you get a chance, go see it, it's right in the city parking lot, next to Maniaches. Also, some of us attended the memorial service at the Lenox Cemetery this past Saturday, and that was very nice. Laura did a very nice job of her research on the Gibson family and a nice presentation. And it was, it was a nice, nice day. My third thing is, I want to apologize to the residents, but mostly to Mrs. Betty Hardway for what occurred at last month's meeting. I wish I would have said more. I was kind of in shock how you were being degraded and hassled, and it was not called for privately or publicly. Mrs. Hardway, I have so much respect for this lady. She came to this township years ago, took the position of the front desk. From there, she continually took classes in education and worked her way up from, I hate to say, a simple receptionist at the counter to a level-three assessor. And she's done a phenomenal job, and thank you, Betty, and I'm sorry for what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's report.
The only thing I have is that we are gearing up for the August primary.
I make a motion to receive a final report, steps present.
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Unfinished business. Arthritis Foundation cosponsoring agency request. Jeanette, you said they didn't get back to us? So if we could, if we could get a motion table this.
I make a motion to table the Arthritis Foundation cosponsoring agency request until our next meeting, which is August 6th.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by clerk Keith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Streetlight proposal, low plank road in Grashit Avenue.
We found out anywhere on this one?
I haven't, no, nothing yet.
Last month when this come up, a question arose if there was any further information needed, because it was an MDOT right away. I was finally able to make contact with a representative from DTE, and if there is any further that needs to be done with MDOT, they will pursue it. And it's probably a good thing that it kind of did, in a roundabout way, happen this way, because the person that did give us the agreement no longer is there. They didn't even know that the agreement was out there to us. So basically, the agreement that you have in front of you is still in effect, and they're just waiting for approval on it.
So this should be removed from the agenda until MDOT gets back and a whole new...
If they need anything out of MDOT, they will pursue it. Alls we need to do is, you know, if this is something we're in order with, sign the agreement, and DTE will take it from there. Because basically, once it's installed, it's their equipment, it's their responsibility.
This is for the intersection at Low Plank and Grashit for the public. You have a comment, by the way?
Yes, I would like to say that it is a very dark corner, and the angle that Low Plank comes in at Grashit makes it difficult for Southbound Grashit people to see people coming off the low plank.
It's a hard angle.
It's a hard angle.
I think also, too, we do have a light at 28 in Grashit that confuses people, too, that most of our on-and-offs are a mile apart, and that one is real tight over there, not too far apart. So I think that's confusing to people, too, they're watching that intersection where the light is and not really paying attention to where Low Plank comes out there, because it is so dark.
So are we looking to make a motion that we go ahead with this one? They have everything.
Well, they, all they need to know is we want to go forward, pay for it. There's a lot of the costs. If we would like to do it, they're ready to report.
Lightroom materials, $1,620 contribution. Well, I'm looking at three years times three, $752.17 contribution, $867.83, and the total annual lamp charge is $250.26. So what, is there a total for them? Or is this the whole?
That's it. That's everything right there.
It's a little confusing.
Yes, it is.
The way they've written it, yeah.
Is the total $1,620, or are all of them due?
Total estimated construction cost of labor and materials is $1,620.
Right.
Based on, they do it three-year times three-year, and I believe that's their minimum contract, Cam or Sherbet? I don't know if that's a standard, is their minimum a three-year to do it?
Would you come up with...
They do it as a times three. I believe it's a minimum requirement for the contract.
Can I see that report?
Yeah.
I really need to read the contract. I need to ask them some questions.
The bottom, the bottom line says, sign the original agreement along with payment of $867.83. What they have in the document is what apparently they're telling us we need to send.
Now, the bottom charges is just the annual, the yearly charge for the light. The other ones would be the contribution cost, the $867.
I guess really quick, just looking at this briefly, this is just their way of breaking it down into payments over a three-year period, instead of doing it lump sum. That's what I take this as.
Cost, can I just write it? I guess all I'm trying to figure out is, what can we pay? We have to pay $867.83.
That's what the bottom paragraph says.
Up front. And then for...
Each year, the annual lamp charge would be $250.72. And as Cam said, probably this is broke down in three-year.
To be honest, with the $867.83 and then our annual charge after that point.
Real claim, clarifies it.
Because if you do, the first two, over three-year period, it's 700 and something. And then if you add the lamp charge into that, it comes to 874 over three-year period. So it's like, it doesn't compute.
I think it needs clarification, because it's not, you can't tell for sure.
It's perfectly clear to now.
Right.
Cam, do you know when the last one was done?
Probably before me. To my knowledge, I don't recall any time ever requesting a street lamp to be put up as long as I've been here, because I think they were all existing, you know, all been better placed for years.
I think we just had a question where we were having you check out where the different street.
Yeah, at one point, we were in a discussion, there were so many of them slacked. I didn't recall there being that many, and you actually gave me a list of addresses, and I actually went and physically went out and looked for each one, and I literally found two that were being charged for that were outside our boundaries.
Right, right.
Do we have a history of car accidents there?
You know, during this discussion, and maybe Marty and Benny can help me out with this, but there's only two accidents, three?
Two to three, that's it.
That I can think of. One was, you know, we figured that they made a turn too early, because of the way the angle was. The other one, I remember alcohol was involved, and he just didn't stop at the stop sign in the third one, and that's all I can recall.
And who requested this? Who said?
I really don't know.
You don't know? You don't know how this came to be at the table?
Ron was asked. That's why I'm not saying very much.
I requested it, because it's kind of a bad corner. I hate coming out of like the bum-bum Columbus Way, trying to find a corner to turn, and I just made a suggestion, to put a light there. I don't think it's a bad suggestion. All the years that I've lived out here and have driven down Grashit, I have found that to be a very confusing corner. And there have been times when the people that are parked there waiting to get out of Grashit can't. I have personally no objection to this. My only question is, right now, I can't, I can see the corner, but are there any houses right there where this light would be shining right in there?
Right in their house, no. No, if that was in the intersection, the light won't shine in their house.
Oh, it actually in the intersection, the overhead?
No, actually, it's up the pole.
Right. But still, it won't affect that house, there's only that one little house, and it won't affect it.
It won't be shining right in their bedroom window, I imagine? Well, I personally don't have any objections to this. Yes, Luke, go ahead.
I'll just let you guys know, when we did the Grashit study, that corner, they had talked about reconfiguring that corner and making it so it isn't at the angle that it is. So I don't know whether or not you might want to hold off, because they had talked about making that to where it actually comes in at a 90, so that it won't be at an angle. So, and the Grashit corridor plan, that is set to be changed.
Can you give me a timeline on that? Are we talking five years?
It's more or less whenever there's funds available. It was one of those things that they had to talk to the one homeowner on the corner, because they needed to swap some property, give them some property when they cut the road and turn it to where they have the same amount of property, but that way they can actually make a curve and put it to a 90 in Grashit. So that's what their plan is, that's, I'm talking, I remember right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, last spring, before we attended an MDOT.
Say that again?
I said, last spring, we attended an MDOT seminar, and you knew about that?
Yeah.
Because you were there a couple nights. So that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Reconfiguring.
You know, with reconfiguring it, though, it's still not going to have traffic, you know, it's not going to have the light, so if it does get reconfigured, they may have to move the light, but I can't see it happening for a while. But you know, this isn't a traffic light, this is just a...
I do understand, yes, thank you.
Now, you said something about people trying to pull out.
Yes, because it gets backed up at times, and I think it's because of the odd angle, they can't see, right?
I would like to see it there, but I would like to see clarification on the cost first, because I, it's confusing the way it's set.
Not only that, but the other streetlights that we have in the township, we paid the Edison only. And maybe we, maybe the township paid something when they first went in, but I agree, it needs just to be clarified, because we don't pay any annual lamp charge on any of those and...
Yeah, just kind of while you were talking, looking this over, looks like they estimated the total cost of that project to be $1,620. If we wanted to span it over three years, it would cost us $752.17 a year, or we could just pay the whole, $867.83 upfront, with the $250 annual lamp charge. So it looks like this is kind of a cost sharing on their part, given the total estimate that's on this form. But I have no problem making a couple more phone calls to get clarification, if that's what the board desires.
Yeah, their cost minus revenues, that they're charged, that they could charge most of the revenue that they obtain from it.
That's what I was, yeah, that's what I'm kind of taking to this.
That's what I thought.
I also thought, though, Cam, within the last 20 years, there was a light there, and I thought it was like a 32 and a half, you know, just the overhead light. For some reason, I thought there was one at 32 somewhere.
I honestly, I just, I don't recall anything.
Yeah, it wasn't, John Garner worked on it, and I really, I believe it was right on 32. So there may be some information somewhere in DTE's records that shows what we...
Right. Well, at least, you know, the phone calls I made, at least I have good contact now, so it'd be very easy for me to find that out.
Okay.
So we, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until August 6th, unless we want to do this as a mid-month business. No? Okay.
Mid-month, this is supposed to be for emergencies? This is not an emergency.
Mid-month is supposed to be for emergencies, this is not an emergency.
We will table streetlight proposal until the next meeting, that would be August sixth.
Support.
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by trustee Churchy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. New business. Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget.
This is where I think we wanted to table this until immediately following the annual meeting on June sixteenth at ten o'clock. So the annual meeting is at ten o'clock, and we will talk about the two budgets immediately directly.
You made the motion.
That's a motion.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Anbacher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget line item adjustment.
The same scenario on that one, I make a motion to table it until immediately following the annual meeting.
Support.
Again, motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Anbacher. No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. New Haven Food Pantry Volunteer Recognition. You have the certificate, Tony?
In having conversations with Cindy Howard from the New Haven Food Pantry, we found that the employees there, the volunteers there, I should say, have put in numerous hours of their own time with no recognition, with no pay, without being reimbursed. At this time, I'd like to do, or we would like to do as board certificates of appreciation to the volunteers at the New Haven Food Pantry. Cindy, you want to move? For the dedication to the New Haven Food Pantry, volunteers don't get paid, not because they're worthless, but because they're priceless. We couldn't do it without you. Bill Marzec.
Bill Marzec. Bill has been with us from the very beginning. He's just a wonderful man. Frances Pete. She's been with us from the very beginning. And I can tell her pastor to ever get here today. Because she doesn't like any recognition, and she works so hard. Janice Marzec. Janice has been with us from the very beginning. And she works so hard, you have no idea. I, I don't know if all of you are aware of it, but each village is represented here. Bill and Janice are yours, they're from Lennox. And Mary James is from Lennox. Frances Pete and me and Bill are from New Haven. And Irene is from Ray Township. And you forgot your name again, what was it? Dennis. And Dennis is from Chesterfield, New Baltimore area. And you got to thank their wives too, because these, their wife, they're never home, they're always with me. So thank you, all your wives have been up with us. Irene, would you like to thank Irene from Lennox Township? And I can never say her last name because she.
Hoocher.
Yeah. I'm going to get a promise not to be mad at you, Bill. But my husband, who always tells me, it's okay, we can do this. There's no eyes in the food pantry, but we can do this. Come, I'm willing. Don't be mad. Mary, Mary James, who's been with us from the very beginning. Mary does everything. The books, the money, the shopping, the stocking. See, I really don't mind going through there anymore. And last, our favorite is Dennis. Dennis goes down to Canton, he uses his own vehicle, him and Bill, we have an infant's pantry. And they go down one few hall, and they pick out a ton of diapers for the infant pantry that we have. He makes sure that all the babies have diapers. To me, to drive all the way down to Canton is just amazing, him and Bill. So thank you guys for the baby pantry, David, really. All of you guys are the most amazing people I have ever, ever met in my life. Thank you.
Cindy walked away too quick, she had one too, but I guess she didn't want to be handed it. Thank you for everything that you guys do.
I, you know, I, and Mrs. Howard, I'd like to recognize you. I'd like to thank you for everything you do and for everybody. This is something so small for, for people who give so much. And you take care of our most valuable resource in our community, our people. There's nothing more valuable that we have, and it's much appreciated on a daily basis. I can't think enough, I, I tell you, the feedback we get is just incredible. And what you've been able to accomplish over there is just overwhelming. Thank you so much. Two thousand thirteen SMART contract.
Thank you for coming, you don't, we don't have to sit through the rest of the morning. Let's just sleep. Thank you.
Jeffrey, you going to talk to this, sir?
I just need, basically just need authorization for me to.
I, I think it's the same agreement that comes year after year from SMART. It helps offset the cost of the community transit partnership that we have with SMART, where we provide transportation services to seniors disabled and residents requiring transportation for things like getting back and forth to work even these days, which we're doing a lot more of. As I, as I've been informed by SMART, the amount that Lennox Township has available transferred this year is fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars total. And previous years, that's been transferred to the EMS to keep that, that service operating. To give you a rough idea, I won't go into a lot of depth into the history of this, but last year, from, from, and most of you were there when this started, or very shortly after it started, last year, the EMS provided nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six rides on the, on the SMART vehicle. So we've come a long way from one little bus and superb service a couple days a week. That's it. Unless there are any questions?
Make a motion that we approve the municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year two thousand thirteen.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Yeah, definitely, Jeff, if you can pass the word to that, our employees over there doing a great job.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Matter of fact, I don't know if Jeanette gives this directly to Fred or if this goes to you. I can sign this immediately tonight, if you want, after the meeting.
Okay.
We'll take care of it. Thank you. DPW, temporary seasonal position.
Well, I think this was the most expensive one, and what night, since we started doing this. Plus, you know, a couple months ago, I asked for some seasonal help. We did start off with Shannon, our floor enforcement guy, helping us like we did last year. Week or two into it, it really wasn't working out with his schedule. And he informed us that he was no longer going to be able to do it. We had a discussion at our annual budget meetings about it, decided to put it out in paper, The Voice. We did that. I did receive eleven resumes slash job applications. We did do a review of all of those, and after careful review, we chose four applicants. We did hold interviews here at the building with treasurer Anbacher, deputy supervisor Ventimandlia, and myself. And after everything was all done, I think we, we had one candidate that kind of stood out that I think we felt would be a good fit for the job. And that, that was Wesley Green. Wesley's moving from college right now, he's attending college over in Rochester. He is a township resident. I think he'd be a good, good fit, and if I'm correct, that we hired him for the seasonal position.
Starting tomorrow, I would like to.
As you can see, we have two piles of phone in the parking lot.
Did he say he could start right away, Cam?
Yes.
Okay. He's not here by chance?
No, he did not, he did not come tonight. I did attach a copy of his resume and the application.
And this is at the same dollar per? The same rate that?
It was advertised at the nine dollars per hour, no benefit. Because he is attending college, like, like most college kids, they would be returned back, you know, probably sometime in September. The actual date, I don't know that. I know he's involved in some sports, so I'm sure there's a little bit of a variance there. But by that time, we'd have the bulk of the work completed, and we'd be wrapping up because of the false season weather.
I make a motion that we approve the seasonal hire of Wesley Green at nine dollars an hour to work with at DPW. Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Anbacher. No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Temporary construction meter policy.
This is something that we, we have never had in place before. Smith and I have worked on this for a few weeks now, putting this stuff together. We've had, it seems like every year we have a couple of requests for different construction projects or different things going on where somebody needs temporary water use throughout the township. But we've never had anything formal in place for each party to agree to and adhere to. This kind of spells it out, what's expected out of each individual. Plus, it also helps us out as far as we're not trying to chase a contractor for a payment after the fact. With the way this is spelled out, we, we basically get payment upfront and through monthly billings and whatnot, we draw off that too, until it gets down to a low, low enough amount, then make a agreed deposit. Plus, it also protects us if we do have a repair, that it, we can take the repair out of that fund as well. The only thing that, that we would like to add under number two is just add some, some simple language that, that the customer agrees to hold the township harmless for anything that may occur.
And I am involved with these guys on this too, and recommended that those changes be made. And I know, Cam, when you were talking about Wesley, Sirman and I were talking about it again. Because he's got a couple of plateaus that need to be changed, we thought we'd put that empty language back in.
Sure.
Would strengthen our position and bring out that there was a problem.
I agree.
So we recommend it.
I make a motion that we approve the temporary construction municipal water meter policy with the changes. Top one.
Yes. Indemnification.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Paisley. Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen water rates.
Good evening.
Is there a safe?
Good evening, you have two letters from our office regarding the water and its recommended rates for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And if you don't want me to go through the letter, I will entertain any questions that you have, that you guys have. This is a, the same procedure that we've used in the past fifteen years.
Thank you.
I know you usually do this, and it's a pass-through, but the amount that it needs to jump, it seems just astronomical. Is there any way we can split the difference on that, instead of going thirty-one fifty and raising it to thirty-nine? Only raise it to like thirty-five? I mean, what? These increases, like you said, are pretty astronomical. I mean, you, you know, when you say, okay, it'll only cost the household six eighty-eight a month, well, but that's, you know, almost seven bucks a month on top of what they're already paying. I just didn't know if there was anything else we could do with it.
But your return to the water rate?
That, this increase is actually a lot lower than it was a few years ago when the methodology changed. Unfortunately, part of these increases that everybody is receiving here, we, we received one of the lowest ones. And.
And that was thanks to you doing all that research and that work you did, I know.
Yeah, a lot of the, the different controls that we put in place helped us get a better rate. rate. But unfortunately, because of the times, less people, you know, people moving out of state, out of different areas, and then just sheer economics where people are using less water is trying to cut costs, the overhead stays the same. So they, in order to make that up, our base rate actually increased on us this year. If you look through the numbers, the per thousand cubic rate actually went down a little bit for our base rate. Our monthly fixed charge is what is driving this increase. As you had mentioned, this is purely a pass-through increase. If we do not do this pass-through increase, then my budget will actually take another hit that's already hurting really bad as it is.
We lose one?
Technically, yes. I mean, we don't know exactly what the percentage is of the markup from what our DWSD rate to what our customer rate is, but it's just enough to cover our own end costs.
It's only ten percent. But that covers the operation maintenance of the township to maintain the system. Any un-metered water, you know, if you have any leaks in the system, or a meter is not reading correctly, and also Wesley did. So that's very, very small increase that barely covers the township costs on the operation maintenance part.
And then I'd like to mention, we are looking at significant capital improvement this year that would help us carry that through with replacing the PRD's Alex One. Those valves are the original valves from when the system was put in. And it's gonna be a possible project, I believe somewhere between sixty to seventy-five thousand dollar range.
Actually, your cost compared to other municipalities is very low. It's, you know, your whole department is right there.
Most of them.
So you don't have a lot of overhead costs to run this. Other municipalities, they have way, way higher base charges.
Yeah, just for conversation's sake, to give you an idea, I believe our new rate, our fixed charge is gonna be like seven thousand some dollars a month. We have some communities that are not that far away from us, that I know are paying over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand a month in fixed charges. Granted, they are a larger community, but it's representative of how they come up with our rate.
Take a multiply factor of population, it's not even close.
Right.
Okay, now, we just talked about the water first, or can I talk about, can I ask a question about the sewer and...
Oh, Wes, sure. Do you wanna do water first, get this out of the way, and then jump right into sewer? Next topic?
That's what I did.
Can I get this one out, say? I just wanna take care of this one first, by the side of the table, so there's no confusion.
Yeah, if, yeah, if you start jumping, I swear to you, we're gonna...
They're both, we're talking about the same thing. You know, pass-through.
Correct.
Yes, similar.
Any other questions?
I would like to make a motion that we increase the water supply rate from thirty-one fifty to thirty-nine dollars per TCF for 2011-2012, which will result in an increase of six thousand three hundred and eighty cents per liter.
Sorry, that's 2012-2013.
President?
2012-2013.
You've got it on here, the other way around.
Sorry. 2012-2013.
I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. 2012-2013 sewer rates.
Yeah, similar manner, with good cap plate that also have sewer rates. It's basically a pass-through, and again, it's only a ten percent for metering and operation maintenance costs. And I know you guys have some questions about that.
Okay, so my question is, you have figured in here, the North Grashit interceptor phases one through four?
Correct.
That's the stuff south of us?
Correct.
Can we take that part out of this? So that we're not charging the residents for that?
The township board can do whatever they want.
Well, we're paid, we're paid for the water and sewer, or I'm sorry, the sewer line that went up, the North Grashit interceptor from, you know, twenty-sixth of. It was all part of the same project.
Correct. You do the township, and it does get hit with all phases, one through four, and then also five in the Lennox level, which is twenty-sixth and north. And it was decided, the board decided not to pass that to the residents from twenty-sixth to the north end.
Right.
However, one through four is charged through the county, through the rates, to you guys every month. And that's why it's showing here. If the township board would like to delete that, obviously, it's up to your discretion.
Well, I think it is within their discretion, but I don't think it should be deleted, because that's what we're gonna get charged for as a township, no matter what, because of the prior agreement, and because we feed off of, or live off of, that downstream sewer.
Correct, because we're a component of that part of our system.
Right, our share.
Correct.
Just in our proportionate share of the downstream system is what we're talking about, which is really pretty minor compared to like what Chesterfield has in terms of the downstream share.
Absolutely. It's extremely minor. We only have, how many customers do we have, George Rowland?
Off top, I have fifteen.
Fifteen? Fifteen, indeed, customers for sewer line of twenty-sixth to thirty-one.
But that portion of it isn't being charged back to the customer?
Correct.
When does this have to be done by July first?
July first.
Well, actually, wouldn't we need to approve it thirty days prior, to be able to implement it on July first?
Possibly in July. Yeah, that's why both rates are here tonight.
The only thing I was thinking was, if we waited until we talked about the budget, and either absorbing the six ninety-one, or halving it, like Karen said, with the other, just that portion of it. That's my thoughts.
A lot of those fifteen are, how many are commercial clients, Cam?
Probably more than half.
So it's direct effect on our commercial budget, which is State of Michigan, things of that nature. We have such a huge loss on this right now, it's astronomical. I believe it's a one point three million loss a year on our sewer line. There's no way to make that up with the customers that we have. Not even, it's, it can't happen.
When the economy turns back around, we will get our investment back.
Well, we'd have to make up one point three million a year to break even right now.
That's not really the issue before the board. The issue is, do we have some...
We're talking cost.
So the question I put to the board is, do we take out the North Grashit phases one through four off of this billing and pay for it through our fund balance? And can I put that portion on the residents?
Sir Man, is there anything that keeps us from separating our residents from our commercial accounts?
I don't think we could do that legally. It's one way for everybody.
Is that what you mean by rates? Actually, I believe we had a discussion...
I thought we could do it.
Yeah, sorry.
No?
The only thing that we have in our, within our ordinance, and then it's also been adopted, is anybody's outside of our district, we can charge them one and a half times.
So like our Chesterfield customers, and the Yang Casco?
Correct. But currently, no sewer exceeds outside of our boundaries.
Well, if we help the residents, we also wanna help the commercials, commercials struggling just as bad. And they're applying to some of the residents.
Just to clarify, this rate does not cover the township cost. The break even is about three times higher because of the sewer debt. If we work that back into the rates, then the number is three times higher. So right now, the township is absorbing almost two-thirds of the rates as is. And that was a board decision years ago to help the residents. I just wanna make that clear.
On average, in another community, how will this rate stack up?
It's very controlled, but because of the debt, only the North Grashit communities are getting hit with this. The other local county communities are not getting that, because they already paid for those sewers, or are still paying for it. It's just, right now, you know, work being done to construct the sewers, and we're on the last segment. That's why Lennox is seeing this hit right now. Chesterfield, Gohegan, they'll be getting, you know, a portion of this cost. The county is carrying about sixty percent, I believe, too, because they own the sewer.
Jody, are you suggesting that we absorb the six hundred and ninety-one and pay for it through the general fund? Is that correct?
Or from the intrakers' fund balance? So I guess the question would be, is to not raise the rate at all on this one? Would that be about a wash?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we have that option. It's certainly something we can discuss with the county. And that would change the rate if that happened, obviously. But we're still gonna have a base rate, and we're still gonna have an increase.
No, but what's gonna happen is, we're gonna get the sewer bill from the county.
Right.
And we're gonna pay it, just like we do now. But our residents are only gonna pay the seventy-five that, per MCF that they're paying now. Anything up and above, we would just be paying for it.
Yeah, Jody's suggesting that whatever the county bills, the township will pay for it, but any, the difference between last year and this year would be absorbed by the township? Jody, am I correct? You just don't wanna raise the rates for this year? You wanna keep it the same as last year?
Right. It's just my suggestion.
Well, in time-wise, where are we at in terms of the, what's the time deadline on this, in terms of Jody trying to tie this to the budget meeting again?
Same. They have to know by June first, or, I'm sorry, July.
July one.
Well, they have to know a little bit before that, so that they can get the system changed.
Right. July first, that's when the new rate takes an effect. We're not gonna change the rate, is it? Yeah, you would still get, charge the new rate. The township will keep the old rate until there's further decision.
But what I'm saying is that if we were to go with Jody's suggestion, pay that six hundred and eighty-one thousand, would that not result in a different rate from the county?
Not from the county, from Lennox.
I don't, I don't know that the county would allow us to pay it upfront.
I see that.
So the question would be just not to raise the rate, and absorb the difference?
Well, no, it's not as simple as that. The six ninety-one is not the increase. Every year you get charged with a debt, or pays one through four.
Right.
This year, the 2012 portion, Lennox portion, is six ninety-one. Last year it was five percent.
Right.
It varies every year because of the interest and the final cost of the final construction of the other phase.
We don't know what that cost is, right?
So I'm not sure if deleting that number would bring back the rate for last year. I don't know if it's a wash, if that's the question.
What's your, what's your recommendation to do right now?
We recommend the same thing every year. We just forget the, what the township getting charged is, and just add ten percent to it to cover your operation maintenance costs.
For all now?
For all, yeah. Your administration operation maintenance. These numbers include the rate from the county, plus ten percent for your portion. So, same procedure every year. So we recommend increasing the base charge to, as we have done in the past year, to cover the township cost, and to absorb the rate charges from local county.
And this has proved to be advantageous to us, using the same process.
Actually, if we look at the portion that the township is absorbing right now, it's not.
Take out the Lennox level, just take that out.
Take that out. It is ten percent, you don't have, you don't have, again, you don't have a big overhead in operation maintenance cost, so ten percent will cover it. It's the same methodology that we use for the water. It's only ten percent.
Tony, what about, what if we just raised it, like I mentioned, to the water part way, and then absorb the extra? That at least gives the residents and the commercial a little bit of a break.
Well, that's what I was... I was just trying, you know, and this one, we get a little bit more leeway because it's not. That's all, I just...
Our largest customer, State of Michigan, Cam?
That's correct.
Prisoners?
Yes. What's the percentage they use in the system? Well, they house only thirteen hundred inmates, which is, you know, more, that's the most people we have on, we don't have that many people on the sewer. If you remove them from the equation, seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent, let's say, is coming from the...
At least, maybe even a little bit higher.
That's only on twenty-six mile sewer. That's where they are.
Next would be Myers?
Yeah, Myers, yeah.
As far as the next larger user, would that be Quail Run?
Quail Run, sorry?
Then you'd be probably looking at Myers, Bay River.
America.
Not Quail.
That's just one, just one.
Quail One isn't individually built, correct?
As far as the...
It's built to the community?
Quail Run is built off of a master meter.
To the community?
So they receive one bill, and then they take it from us.
This is a difficult decision to make. I don't, there's nobody who wants to raise rates here, you know, for the residents. But I trust the process. And.
Well, it's less than pass-through cost is what you're saying. It's under what it, what it causes.
Yeah, if we take the, the 26th through 31 mile sewer, that's, it's passed through plus 10%. We add it, and Jody doesn't look that, that same way. If we add it, then you lose it. I can only present the data to you, the township board, whatever they want to cite on it. However, I would suggest that Terry, if the township board goes to that route, that you issue some kind of credit and not, not just say, are we going to absorb it? We'll say we'll retain the same rate of last year for this year. And that's it, as simple as it is. So basically, you're rejecting my recommend, my recommendation for increasing the rate. And that's all. And you will simply stay at the old rate.
And once again, in talking in savings, the larger savings would go to the State of Michigan prison. If you're seeing there's 75% of.
Of the flow.
But they also pay the most. And you, you can't look at it that way because at the same time, the residents and small businesses are getting hurt.
Well, we retain the same rate as we had last year. We're not paying the bill, we're just putting it off. Am I correct? We're just pushing it onto another.
Basically, yes. If you, if you decided to leave the rate as it stands today, that's, that's more likely what you'd be doing.
We're just putting it off.
If still, some of these, you know, with some of the other major interceptors that the county is acquiring, you know, those are driving up costs as well, system-wide. Infrastructure's getting old, things need to be done. If, unfortunately, people that are using the systems need to help pay for it. Nobody likes to see these rates go up and realize how difficult it is. But there again, you know, right now, we're, we're barely holding on to our own as well. So if we do not increase our rates to help cover that, we're going to be in a lot, a lot harder situation even next year.
No, then it can be looked at. Phases 1 through 4, we would have had to pay those even if we only took it to 26 mile road.
Yes, true.
So to bring the sewer in, this was, the Lennox local was always an investment in the future and an investment to bring business to the community. Where this, we had to have regardless. So there is, you know, they're, they're two separate things, but.
I guess what I would note too is that the prison was behind the push to get extra capacity, which led us to the can, to get that capacity. And let's not forget that the prisons paid a lot of that, for a lot of their project. Because they, remember the checks that we got from them last year were for their share of, of the development. So if we were not raising the rate, if we're not to rate, if we're not to raise the rate, we'd be basically subsidizing the prison's sewer bill. And they were the ones that wanted it. They're the ones that needed it the most. At least doesn't relate to 26 mile road. Again, I would have the same comment about the, the rates. The increase is only 11.9% for this year. And Lennox is in much better position compared to other communities.
The increase is a bit higher.
Oh, yeah. Your system is, is brand new. You don't have all a lot of maintenance costs on it. And you don't have a lot of users, which, you know, in some way it hurts you, but helping you right now, you know.
As far as percentage you use?
Yep. You know, I have a lot of leads that are problems with the, with the system. And it's, again, it's brand new.
Well, with that, in my household, we find that if we pay our bill on time, we take care of business for the future. So I'm going to make a motion that we, for the wastewater disposal use charge rate increased from $75 to $83.90 per MCF. And that results in an increase to $8.90 per month increase in the household for 2012, 2013 fiscal year. I'm sorry, what if I nuts?
Well, when you, you mentioned that get in the water, too. That's approximate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I, and that, to approximately 1.90% annual or $8.90 per month increase per household.
As much as I pay to raise and try, I also have to support it.
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by trustee Church. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we scheduled a policy manual workshop. After talking with Jeanette, our last rescheduled for a policy manual workshop, did not take into consideration of department heads, the new hours of operation. We are close at 5 o'clock now. Anytime you've done any workshops regarding policy manual, we have had the department heads present. I would like to do it during the hours of operation so that we wouldn't have to pay them above their normal work hours.
But I, I thought we were just going through it first and find, find what we thought needed to be changed because of situations we've gone through and then get input from everybody.
We've always done with all the department heads, so that's why this is being stated.
Shall we pick a date? Anytime?
I'm open to suggestions.
I don't see that with those two companies, sir. You don't know? Okay. Well, you know, the other thing then is make it Wednesday. You can be there if you'd like to be there. Or you suggest that we don't do it?
No, go ahead and schedule it with the way the supervisor wants it. Obviously, it's to avoid that I can be there. Go ahead and schedule it. And if it's something I can be at, I will try to attend.
Okay, well, I'm trying to accommodate you, that's all.
No, no, it's understandable. Go ahead. Pick a time and date.
Are Wednesdays good for people?
Like what I mean?
Let's make it at 6 o'clock in the hopes that you can be there.
Well, probably, yeah, the department heads are off at 5 o'clock.
Oh, sorry. Backtrack. Is it going to take more than an hour? Should we schedule two hours, 3 to 5?
Before we were doing a 2, 2 or 3 o'clock start time with all department heads present.
I guess, let's back up a little bit. The first thing I think would be to do is to give an assignment to each one of the departments to go through the policy manual and mark things that they think need to be looked at. And then that's the stuff we will look at. And if that's, if it's already set for us to do that, we may not meet the employees in the meeting. We may be able to, because I know some of it was just cleaning up verbiage that no longer applies because we changed something along the way. So. It would give everyone the task out there and a deadline to have that in.
That's fine, that sounds great. So are we looking at having that in the month of June? Month of August?
We could do it in July, we just don't have a meeting in July. But we could do a workshop in July. So if we give.
Second or third weekend?
Second or third weekend.
That's better.
Because of the holiday.
About the 10th or the 17th of July at 2:00 p.m.?
Well, if we do it this way, we may be able to do a night meeting.
Oh, okay.
So the first step would be to give the employees until June 30th to go through the policy manual and mark anything that they feel needs to be looked at.
And then just have them turn in a sheet and I'm not being corrupt without the meeting?
Well, let's see what gets marked. Maybe they'll say it all looks okay to them. I know there's some things with payroll that need to be updated and some of the hour stuff. But if we do that first and see what it gets us.
And wait to make the plans for the meeting after we receive them. Okay, that sounds cool. So. I make a motion that each department head go through the policy manual and find out what they would like to discuss and hand it in at the end of June, which is the 30th. Well, actually, it'd be the 29th. And then at that time, we'll decide would we want to have their meeting.
Support it.
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you for your patience to sit through this all night. Annual property liability insurance treaty?
Insurance, I'll answer this, sir.
I appreciate that.
Do we pay you enough for this?
Certainly no complaints.
Next time, I promise to move you up on the agenda.
Good evening, my name is Steven Saft Jr. with Nickel and Saft Insurance located Mount Clemens. And I'm here with my associate, Mr. Robert Weber. Today, we're here to answer any questions in relationship with the proposal that was delivered to the supervisor on May 30th. This is the renewal of the property and liability coverages that are secured for the protection and benefit of the township and its residents and officers and employees. The effective date is July 1. Taking a step back, you may recall last year when we first were invited to provide the service to the township, the township was on a June 1 effective date. And it was deemed, particularly from Treasurer Ottenbach, that a July 1 date made more sense from the recording of expenses in relationship to the budgetary purposes for the township. Also, independent of, of this policy, we are the agent for your workers' compensation. And in that case, we went from a June 2011 to June 2012 with a 30-day policy extension of June 2012 to July 2012. And now that policy, we renew July 2012 through 13. So that alleviates Treasurer Ottenbach's problems with, not problems, but added difficulty with the payroll audits going back and forth between two fiscal years. So we've got all that in sync now. And hopefully that has some, alleviated some issues for you from that administrative standpoint going forward.
Today, I received in the mail for the payroll audit, and they're still saying June 1st to, June 1st. Do we ignore that?
No, you'll have to do, you will have to, this will be the last year you'll have to do that. You'll have to still respond for June 2011 through June 2012. And then there'll be that 30-day period. And then going forward, this time next year, that's when you'll be happy with that. But you'll have to, this will be the last year if you'll have to do that. This is that transition period.
Okay, thank you.
That got me a little sidetracked, but hopefully you all have a copy of the proposal identified by Tri. I'm going to go through this real quick. Please feel free to interrupt me anytime. Again, the carrier is the Argonaut Group. They are an admitted carrier, they are A-rated and have a category strength of 12. That measures their surplus in relationship to obligations. The highest rating offered by AMS is 15. So we're very pleased with the, the fiscal strength of this carrier in relationship to the current market that we're all struggling through. The proposal does include terrorism as defined by the Federal Terrorism Act of 2002. The act has been expanded in Congress to, initially, the act included foreign terrorist acts. The act has been amended twice, now includes domestic terrorism. So, believe it or not, we live in an age where you have to define a terrorist act between foreign and domestic. But now it encompasses all of any terrorist act. And here we're securing that coverage. Think of it as a tax. The United States adopted a program that had been in place for a number of years in Great Britain. Great Britain's insurance industry reached out to Parliament and said, please help us. We're having, you're having difficulties with the Irish, they're blowing up buildings. We need some relief for a catastrophic claim. After 9/11, in this country, we adopted a similar proposal. You have to have the endorsement in order to have coverage and protection. Initially, it was strictly foreign terrorism. And we have many clients that felt that they didn't have exposure or weren't a target. But then the act was modified to include domestic terrorism. So if you think back to Oklahoma City and Timothy McVeigh, that is a domestic terrorist act. So now you have to have that endorsement to encompass both of those type of exposures. The proposal includes that for full policy limits. The, the full liability limits are $5 million in occurrence and in the aggregate. We include sewer backup liability for full policy limits. There is no deductible for your liability claims. Public officials and total related practices are distinct policy forms, again, with $5 million limits. We do include the inverse condemnation. And this year, we've modified that limit. Last year, and again, very, I'll try to make this as brief as possible, we have coverage for taking. And that coverage was limited to the limits of 100,000 per claim and 300 in the aggregate. Those limits were dedicated to the payment of damages. Defense expenses were outside of those limits. And the payment of defense expenses, the payment of attorney fees would not reduce the available amount to pay damages should you be found liable. Thank Worth Township up in, what county is that? Sandlight County, thank you. Because of the recent commitment to have community planning management perform some training for your planning and planning board and zoning board appeals, we've been able to convey this information to the insurance company. And they've agreed to increase those limits from the 100,000, 300,000 to 500,000 a million. Again, these are monies that are dedicated for the payment of damages, the defense expenses, which normally are the lion's share of these type of claims, are outside of this and won't be rolled with those damages. So you're talking about passing out expenses if there was a, a large claim. You're not worried about paying an attorney over time and having the amount available to you under the policy be eroded or eaten away. That amount stays set aside until damages are potentially awarded. Commercial automobile, fairly self-explanatory. We do have $2 million in physical damage coverage with $1.9 million on an agreed amount for your emergency vehicles. You do maintain a $500 deductible for the damaged vehicles. This is a fleet automatic policy. So during the course of the year, if you're adding a vehicle or taking a vehicle off, you don't get the obligation to notify us. We'll automatically be contemplating that extension. Property coverage, we've bumped the property for an inflationary. Property coverage, we've bumped the property for an inflationary value of, the value for this past year's been 3%. You do have a $500 property deductible, or including mechanical breakdown, flood and earthquake coverage. In the marine emergency service equipment, we have approximately $520,000 and another $94,000 in unserved miscellaneous equipment from other departments. We're including the crime coverage and the position bonds that are required by, as a general law township. And a note about the liability limits I mentioned, time and again, we have $5 million. Those limits, the limits of $5 million are dedicated to each line of coverage. So, we have $5 million for the general liability, $5 million for the public officials, $5 million for the employment-related practices, $5 million for the auto liability, and, oh, you don't have law enforcement, so we're not worried about that one. So, if you had a catastrophic auto loss and you blew through $3 million liability coverage, you're not going to erode or attach the limits that are set aside for the general liability or the public officials or the employment practices. These are dedicated, if you think of it as a dedicated checkbook or a dedicated bucket that's filled with cash, that is just for that type of claim. So, one claim doesn't impact or erode the limits available for another type of liability claim. Sorry? So she wants to be required to see if you have questions. I think I want to go home.
Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
Back to the vehicle coverage.
Correct.
If a tornado hits my headquarters station, you said vehicle coverage was either $1 million or 1.5.
That's for liability.
Is that for liability or for-
Physical, physical damage to vehicles.
If, if a tornado came through and took out Station 1, I've got over $1 million in vehicles there.
We're insuring $2,61,376 of vehicle physical damage values.
And that's based on the value, we should look at those again, we should.
For the emergency, we have $1,942,000.
That's a replacement cost, the few, couple of the vehicles or five of the vehicles are on actual cash value, the rest are replacement costs.
That 1.9 million dollars, we don't depreciate it, what Bob's saying. So, if you've got a vehicle, you've got 75,000 miles on it, and you've had it for 10 years, obviously, it's not worth what you paid for, but you're insuring it for a value with the expectation that we're going to cut you a check for that value. We know that probably the new vehicle out there is going to be more expensive, but we're not going to cripple you coming into the deal because you've got a vehicle that's going to be depreciated because of use. Your personal auto policies, if anybody's had a, you know, a claim with their car, the insurance company comes in and they say, well, let's look at this thing, we might, we might have to depreciate this, that's not going to happen with the fire vehicles. And then, on top of-
Oh, I was just going to say, Dennis, you and I went through all the equipment, too. In addition to that, we've got $519,200, which we need to look at for the mobile equipment that's out there, and that's all on replacement.
So, that's on top of the 1.9 million?
Okay, I'll give a file on that.
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you in there. So, actually, I gave you the schedule and all that with the proposal, but I just go ahead with this.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
You did end up talking to Pat Marburg, and he can do that.
Yes, I've been working with Pat and TRID, actually, I would have had this done a couple weeks ago, but I got TRID to approve two things really here. You know, I've been through the certification for zoning and all that, and I had a whopping four days classroom. He has all these designations, so in lieu of having to have somebody at the township go through the classroom setting and do then up in Lansing or wherever, he's your approved administrator for zoning, and, you know, he represents several other communities that you know. So, that was step one. Step two, and we've talked about this with him and so forth, after the elections are over, I think is the time to sit down with the planning commission and the ZBA, he's got a whole schedule of training, which I hope he's given to you and that, and I think it's probably, I'm guessing, about six hours total or something like that. That's what the increase in the inverse condemnation is based upon. So, they were nice enough at TRID to do it on the assumption that we'll get the training done. Because I do want to wait till next year with some activity that we have going on and so forth.
And as a side note, outside of this contact with Mayhar, did I pronounce that right? His, his company, our agency offers the tuition reimbursement up to $500 if you have someone within the organization that secures the certified zoning administrator designation, that's your principal land use officer, but you're hiring Mayhar's firm to act in that capacity on your behalf. Then, as far as members of the planning commission and ZBA boards, the designation that's appropriate for those volunteers is the Michigan Citizen Planner. That is now something that an interested member can take literally online and will reimburse $150 of that expense. But what we're doing here is we made the accommodation for Lennox to kind of step out of that, and, and again, finishing the conversation, if, if a community came back to us and said, we've got the Michigan Citizen Planner for at least half of our volunteers on the plane in ZBA, and we have the certified zoning administrator for our principal land use officer, then we're coming in and offering those higher limits. We've got a unique situation here with Lennox, and then we can come in at a different angle by having this, hopefully, presentation by Patrick for, to your joint ZBA and planning boards. If anybody on those boards still wants to pursue those individual designations, though, our offer to have that tuition reimbursement still stands, and we would still encourage that.
I thought this was a good alternative, and it's kind of accelerating the process.
Thank you both for coming today. It helps going through it with you, and you're explaining it there.
Talk about church solving.
I'd just like to bring up one other thing that we have not discussed yet, but it would be a time-sensitive thing, and we have not yet employee drug testing that we spoke about. And could you explain that, how that helps us, insurance visor?
I, I, it protects the community is the bottom line, and I think you probably should look at it, and this is really, I think the question that has involved council also, but it's my experience that we look at drug testing in two specific points of time. One is at an initial hire during the application and interview process, along with a, a basic physical, and, and this requires a little forethought on behalf of an employer to be able to have a job description, to be able to hand to a physician to say, the job duties required of this person are A, B, C, and D. They have to lift, they have to bend, they have to do this, they have to, and it defines the physical requirements in some very broad scope, and including with that there'd be a drug test. The other time that you would hopefully do a drug test is after, unfortunately, an accident. Anytime there is an injury, anytime there's an accident, as part of the, the process, you would demand a, a drug test. Now, this is going to have to go back because you're going to have to declare this within your employment, yeah, and you're going to post this, to give it people the time before you put it into place. So, if, if you want to have a discussion about how to, at what points in time to engage drug testing, we can certainly give you some specimen or example for council to consider to be able to draft a human resource policy, so you're putting people on notice appropriately to protect yourself in that area also.
I believe, I think it was Ashley, TRID contacted you and went over some dos and don'ts and everything, and I think Jeanette was looking at some clinics you can work with. Usually, they have a pretty good outline of what the procedures and so forth, but if you need more help, then we certainly could work with Terry or Holliday, want to go with it.
I think any industrial clinic in the area here is going to be fully appraised of how to process and how to go about this. I think the, the footwork has got to be done here at Township End to determine when you want these done, and to make sure you're giving your employees and candidates for employment proper notice that this is a requirement going forward.
Somebody should make a note of this, if you do have that policy meeting, that'd be important.
The EMS, because of this relationship, SMART is a very problem, in fact, the FDA guideline for drug tests, which is, you know, the federal grants administration to give a drug testing policy. It is a significant document, but we have it, that has been developed, approved by the attorneys. Nickel and Saft also ensures EMS, as, as you may be aware, and so, you know, I can certainly pass that along to you for review, you know, when you go through the township policy. It might be as simple as basically taking out essential drugs and putting in drugs to help the town.
What is the minimum amount of notice that has to be given or something like that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Did the board work to approve that?
I don't know that there's a statutory number per se. I think in 30 days.
I would think that's not sufficient, but I don't know exactly.
There's, I was going to say, I would suggest 60 or 90 days, but as part of the policy, I think it's incumbent upon you to be able to offer a, a resource for an employee who might be in a position that they have to take care of some dependency issues, that there is a, a resource for them to approach confidential. I know that's always been part, parcel of one of these. You create, you create a situation where, you know, you've created this drug testing or you're creating this, this burden upon you as an employee, and, you know, this is a problem in itself, so you incur a liability to defend yourself because you're trying to protect the public and, and other employees. So, you've got to take the appropriate steps to protect the township at the front end of a decision like this. So, you've got to be able to give them enough notice that if somebody wants to be able to, to kick an addiction, that you're giving them the time to, to work on this, but then you've got to be able to point them to a resource that says, here's a local drug counselor or dependency department from the county, you know, should you have any questions about what may be entailed with the drug test, or if you've got any problems that you need to discuss. So, that's, that's part of the, the communication you have to make to employees, I would recommend.
We can't, we don't offer EAC anymore.
I don't know, we have, sell them to a resource if it's already part of our policy, or our policy may know that it's not permitted use.
My point was if you're making a change, you know, if, if you're, if you're going to, if, if your policy says you can't use drugs.
Correct.
If now you're going to say, not only can you not use drugs, we're going to test you, you know, you have to reinforce the fact that as an employer, and, and from, from what I've seen from the best defensible positions, is that as an employer, then because of this change, you simply say, you know, here's the deadline, and here's a phone number, you can get confidential assistance from county sources or, you know, the local hospital or something, or, you know, AA, you know, you list a couple of phone numbers. You don't have to contract anything, but you just need to be able to say to an employee, you got a problem, you know, here's the resource for you to reach out to, but, but be notified, we're going to be doing this in 60 or 90 days. So, you've got to take the initiative, but we're giving you the, the tools to be able to make a decision yourself.
So, do you care, as I asked, do we still participate with the EAC? Okay, so that's, that, that would be that, you know, it's Employee Assistance Program, and, and person could contact them.
That's more than sufficient.
Yeah, because I know even like some of the hospitals, when they said no smoking, they send their employees to, you know, smoking clinics and stuff like that. Now, if we implemented this, the drug testing and the, the physicals and everything, would this lower our insurance somewhat or not, or not?
Truthfully, no. It's the type of thing we look for, though, to be able to go back year after year to a carrier to maintain consistency in pricing, to maintain consistency in coverages. These are the type of risk management preventive proactive methods or proactive, proactive policies and procedures that an insurance company wants to see an insurer have in place and engaged.
Well, I would go further and say, it's basically a workers' comp issue. I mean, auto and workers' comp, your experience is going to be reflective of this, you know, what good policy is. If you don't have somebody getting an accident, it's going to ultimately save you money. Kind of quantitative thing, but obviously, doing the right thing in the long run is going to save you money in workers' comp, auto insurance, and possibly in a liability situation.
Any questions?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to renew the township property liability insurance of nickel and snout. The annual premium is $45,335, and it includes terrorism.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you waiting again. Public comment?
Hello, everyone, I'm Janet Hartway, go by Dan. I'm here, as you know by my last name, Mrs. Betty Hartway, the former Lennox Township predecessor, is my mother-in-law. I want to thank Trustee Karen Churchy for apologizing to the way Betty was treated last week, that last month's meeting. After she read her remarks on the then current, current status of her office, she was treated with such disdain by a member of this board, and I believe that member needs to apologize publicly to Mrs. Betty Hartway. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Lou, I tell you, I was just hoping that maybe the budget would be available for people to see because we have a public hearing tonight, and no one had anything in front of them to comment on the public hearing on the budget, so there's no copies available for anyone to get, so if there could be copies available before the annual meeting, would be great. Thanks.
Move around that table. There's a whole set of that table.
I must have put it in after I got in there.
Any other public comment? No more public comment?
Meeting is adjourned at, what is that, 9:30.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Treasurer Ottenbach. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.